Everything, so let's do the February first. This was the budget hearing, the joint meeting with FinCom. We were all present for that.
I make a motion to approve meeting minutes from February first, two thousand twenty-four budget meeting.
We have a motion, is there a second?
A second.
Any questions, comments, concerns? Thank you, Tamika.
You're welcome.
Hearing none, roll call, Paul.
Matt's an aye.
Ledger aye.
Yeah, I'm an aye.
Waitman aye. Moving on to the February fifth regular meeting minutes. I believe Paul was absent for these. So we'll hold, we'll do the regular meeting minutes and then we'll pull out the executive.
Make a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes for February fifth, two thousand twenty-four.
Second.
Motion and a second, questions, comments, concerns? Thank you, Tamika, for capturing it. I know it was a long meeting.
Oh, no problem.
Hearing none, Paul, I think you.
I recuse myself.
For the fifth, the regular meeting.
Oh, yep.
Calvin aye.
Waitman aye.
Ledger aye, sorry.
No, sorry.
Yep.
We got you. We have the executive session meeting minutes from February fifth. I would recommend that we approve and not to be released at this time, given that they're both ongoing considerations.
I make a motion to approve the February fifth, two thousand twenty-four executive session minutes, not to be released to the public at this time.
No, second.
A motion and a second, any questions, comments, concerns? Paul.
Matt's in plus.
Ledger aye.
Yeah, I'm an aye.
Waitman aye. Thank you, Paul. I'll keep my kind of opening comments short and sweet. I wanted to thank everyone that came.
The twelve.
Oh, sorry, sorry, sorry.
It's okay.
Oh, we have too many.
I wasn't there for that one, so.
Yeah, so these are the meeting minutes from the twelfth. This was the one that was held jointly with FinCom as well with the department heads. And I think Jen and Tom, you tried to be on Zoom and there were audio concerns, so I apologize for that. I didn't realize that that was a a concern. So should we hold these since it was just Paul, Harry and I and or can Paul and I approve them? Is it a quorum of?
We knew attended technically.
Yeah, yeah.
They attended, so they could.
They couldn't hear.
No, we could hear, we could speak.
Oh, okay, okay.
I couldn't hear.
No, I couldn't, I'm sorry, I take that, but we could see it.
See it.
We could, yeah.
I don't know if any of you had watched the entirety of the recording or not.
I didn't get a chance to yet, so I personally would probably recuse from approving right now.
Is that okay? Just that way the three of us can.
Yeah, no problem. I'll put them on the next agenda.
Thank you, sorry about that.
That's okay.
So we're gonna hold these since it would just be you, Harry and I to vote on them. So when Harry's here, then we can make sure that they're good. Okay. Thanks, Tamika, sorry.
Oh, no problem.
Now, I'll go into my kind of opening remarks. I just wanna thank everyone who came out last Thursday night for the by, the special town meeting and the bylaw changes. The turnout was small, but considering it was a special meeting, I think it was about what we had at the fall, which is a generally regular scheduled town meeting. So I appreciate that. I think the conversation and and input was good. We are, as I mentioned at the meeting, committed to seating a permanent bylaw committee going forward with a charge for any changes, as well as keeping things modern and codified going forward. So hopefully, we don't need to do something of this magnitude again. We also are working on updating all the policies, updating and creating all the policies that are referenced in the bylaws, as well as just for good governmental practices. So in the next coming meetings, keep an eye on our agendas for those as well. I wanted to thank DPW for all their time and effort with the storms. I know it's been a lot of stuff back to back to back, and I think they've been doing a great job kind of trying to keep everybody safe and going. And I think we're closing in on our last couple weeks with our treasure collector, Becky Tuttle, so I just wanted to extend our great thanks to her for all of her work. I think ten years is a massive amount of work that she's done. We're really gonna miss her and appreciate everything that she's done for us, so formally put that out there for her. And I can't believe we're almost through February.
No.
So it's school vacation week, so the kids are at home, so everybody, if you see more kids around, it's school vacation week, and hopefully they're out and able to enjoy the ice skating rink or sledding or just the nicer weather. So, thank you. Anybody have any?
If I could just say one thing, we've used the skating rink half a dozen times. It's, it's really in great shape. Karina and I know the fire department guys have been going down there putting a fresh coat on as often as they can. It's been mint. It's in really good shape, so.
Awesome. It seems like it's been getting a good amount of use and people seem to.
We had fires, what, last, was it last Friday? We had, they had fires out there and it was nice. It was a good showing, yeah.
Very good. Very good. Thank you. I would love if there was someone here for public comment. I don't see anyone on Zoom. So we'll move into Austin Town Administrator update.
Thank you. I've spent a lot of time recently on budget, so there's not necessarily been a lot of other things going on in terms of hiring, things like that. So I don't have a written update for you tonight. I wanted to spend some time talking through some of these policies that was presented in my report, I think, two meetings ago at this point. I just wanna talk through a little bit of what was presented, what some of the rationale was, and hopefully what the next steps are in implementing our first set of comprehensive financial management policies. So I don't know if everyone has them in front of them or if they're at home, but I'll just talk through a little bit, kind of what the approach was in developing these. So first and foremost, we are looking to create policies that are aligned with Commonwealth of Massachusetts or national best practices for financial management. So we've developed two sets of financial policies. One are related to financial planning, and the others are related to the overall operations of the organization. And these were kind of just building on a little bit of some of the broad-based policies that we had. So we already had policies related to debt. We already had policies loosely related to investments or reserves. So formalize some of those into a format that makes sense. So you'll see going through each of the policies, there's kind of a standard format that's kind of talks about the intent of the policy, what it applies to, and then speaks to specifically some of the policy language. So I'm not gonna go through each policy altogether. I think hopefully a future discussion, if board members have questions, we can go a little bit more in depth. But I will go through briefly and just mention the new policies that are included in our proposal. So the first is capital planning. Now, I know that we have a capital planning improvement committee that's set forth in bylaws, which was also just reinforced at the bylaw, the special town meeting. But this policy looks to kind of fill in some of the gaps in terms of the process for how capital planning and budgeting is is created. So I think some of this actually came up the other day at the town meeting. I heard a lot of process questions there. So the capital planning, starting at the staff level, this policy looks to kind of spell out that process. So how do you present? What information is required to be presented to the town administrator, the select board, FinCom and CIPC? Any standard forms or questions that we're estimating will be asked. And then also kind of sets forth practices for the town to consider in terms of their capital planning. So setting an X amount of funds aside for capital purposes, things like that. The second is a forecasting. So we, this year, developed our very first official multi-year financial forecasting model. We thought it was smart also to implement a policy alongside that to inform. Now, I don't plan on going anywhere, but future town administrators fifty years from now when I retire. I think that math checks out. Maybe not, I'll be a very old town administrator. Kind of some of the assumptions that we set forth in the revenues and expenditures. So I talked a little bit about that when I presented the model to the board. But we wanted to put that on paper, so anyone, whether it's a community member, board member, finance committee, anyone can take a look at this policy and see how we do our financial forecasting. So there's a lot of good information there. Special purpose appropriations. Now, what are those? So usually, short and, short and sweet explanation is there appropriations that are made, like appropriating free cash or appropriating from the heights money. It's a good practice to have a policy that relates to that. So the finance committee on Thursday will be talking about open articles. Now, usually, a best practice is you don't have open articles standing for several years, so we shouldn't have something, I'm not saying we do, from twenty years ago. Usually, when a project is complete, you close it up to free cash or you repurpose it to something else. So this policy puts forth kind of the status of articles and what to do with them next. That's a new policy that we're looking to present. Another one on the operational side is creating an administrative financial team consisting of myself, the principal assessor, the treasure collector, the, and the town accountant. Just to routinely make sure that we, as a finance team, are meeting what some of the discussion should be related to, just putting that in place to make sure that, again, next town administrator, next treasure collector, there's a core finance team that by policy has opportunity to meet and talk about the budget, the audit, anything related to finance. New policy. Ambulance receivables. Believe it or not, this is a large, in some cases, it's a requirement for auditing standards, because as you know, we have a very substantial amount of ambulance revenues that come in. Now, I know it's been standard practice for either, in some communities, it's the fire chief goes to the select board and they essentially do a write-off of essentially uncollectible ambulance receivables. I think here, it's been transferred to the town administrator, I think, has the authority to do that. Regardless, we need to have a process for what that looks like. So in terms of how far back are you going, writing off those receivables, what type of receivable are you writing off, things like that. So again, putting process down on paper, so we're not just saying, oh, I think it's time we talk about ambulance receivables. Disbursements, essentially just how we're looking to, to spend money. Again, I think it's really important to make sure that we have a process for, even if it's buying a I almost just said a can of pencils. I don't think those exist anymore. I'll say a can of Pringles for the wreck department. We need to make sure that we have a proper purchasing process. Now, some of that will come with bringing in folks, so obviously bringing in a town accountant has created a lot of processes that are new. A new treasure collector may have some ideas for how we go about spending, but we need to make sure that we have a process set down. So that policy will speak to that. Grant management, again, is another one of those policies that auditors look for. We are fortunate to be a community that receives a lot of grant funding at the state, federal, nonprofit level. Grant management and administration and reporting is probably the most important aspect of getting grants. Because especially if you don't do them the right way, you're often held accountable or you're not permitted to receive any further grants. So kind of talks about when you receive a grant, what's the process? So the process is you send it to the finance team to make sure that it's booked appropriately. If you need to do recurring reporting to the grant agency, what that process looks like to be able to do so. And again, that's a best practice and required. In some cases, for federal grants, you need to attach your grant management policy. Reconciliations, whether cash or receivables, is another new policy that we're looking to propose. This is related to some auditor findings that we've had in previous audits, just making sure that we have a clean reconciliation policy. It hasn't been a major finding, but it's been findings in some recent audits. So we just wanna make sure that between the treasury side and the accounting side, we have proper process that's followed for reconciliations of all kinds, to make sure that our books are on the up and up on a monthly and annual basis. Revenue turnover, turnover. This is a process that is mostly held on the departmental receipts level, so Tamika brings in five hundred dollars for something, making sure that a process is followed when turning that over to to the treasure collector's office. Again, just one of those that is auditors expect to see when they look at your financial management policies. And just last two, real quick, tailings. This was actually brought up at the special time meeting, accepting the provisions of Mass General Law. So essentially, when there's an uncashed check from the community to Jen, if you don't cash it within a certain amount, there's a process that we have to follow. This was proposed by the treasure collector's office after accepting that provision of Mass General Law at the most recent, well, second most recent special time meeting now. So just what steps we need to follow to make sure that, you know, fifty-two days from now, you don't end up cashing that and then now we're bad on paying you for a service. And the final is just tax enforcement. We've had a lot of discussions, I think, at the board level about whether it's uncollected taxes or just overall enforcement. So this was a policy that was put in place to try to be responsive to some of the board's concerns. It sets forth some details on the municipal finance side. How do we approach enforcement of taxes and making sure that reference is appropriate? Mass General Law for those provisions as well. So that was obviously a very high level. I can certainly go into some of the details on those, but I just wanted to briefly introduce this to you and I know that we'll have a deeper discussion at some point. Any questions in the meantime? Anything missing?
I appreciate the work that you and the department heads put into this because I, in reading through its, I appreciate the formatting, that it's all consistent and concise throughout. There's purpose, applicability and scope. I really appreciate the references also, and I think that it shows that these are based in a lot of it, to your point, Austin is MGL and/or other kind of best municipal practices. So I appreciate that.
People tell me they're here and I can't find them in either of the rooms.
They were in the big room.
Yeah.
I know my people are there, but somebody's texting me that tell me they're here at the meeting, but I can't find them. We're dragging our feet a little bit, so if you guys do finish up, we're giving you a lot of great time to post that. Sorry to interrupt. I apologize for my behavior.
Thank you.
It's a wonderful animal inspector. I mean moderator, I mean job in the world to do this.
And so I appreciate kind of that level of detail to everything and, and going through and kind of hearing, I think, this board's and the community's wants and needs and trying to decide where the best, how the best policy that. Policy is nice because it's easier to amend and adjust. I caution that we shouldn't be doing it at the whim of every new seating of a board or something, because it's still rooted in best practices. But it is not bylaw, set in stone, kind of needs to go to town meeting. The board is able to influence any sort of changes. So if we, when it's adopted, it's not that it's, this is what it's going to be forever and always. Does anybody have any thing that jumps out at them for Austin? I did talk to Harry today to see if he had anything of concern and his, he, he made mention that he is really struggling with. And I think we know that on page thirty-one of the policies, the town administrator or select board as backup is responsible for reviewing each warrant for appropriateness by examining the invoices, backup documents and payroll details, directing any inquiries to the town accountant and approving the warrants by signing them. I think a lot of communities have shifted the signing to the town administrator. We did it during COVID. We did it once in a special instance for this board at the holidays. It still allows all of us to have the opportunity to go in and view the warrants and we still get the business to expense reconciliations and everything. I think the, the hope is to get everything online, so it's full transparency, not only for us, but also for the public. So I know Harry really is, is not, does not like having the select board not do the signing. For me personally, I'm okay with that because we still have access to all of the documentation. And I feel like there are still plenty of opportunities for checks and balances, but I wanted to bring it up for a conversation for the board because that's the, the one piece that I know we've heard in different conversations as, as a consideration. But other than that, that was the main feedback that I got from Harry. Like I said, I appreciate all the work and I think that they're way more comprehensive than what we've had. And happy to kind of work with these as a great starting point and then as if, as if needs arise, address them as a board. But I think, my hope is to start really kind of working through the policy side so we can get some vetted and approved policies.
Hate that.
Almost that's in that fight. That we can have them, because a lot of the bylaws do reference policy and to see that we are making that commitment to, we've made the commitment to the bylaws and now also the policies. And I would like to see everything kind of collated together. And I know Austin has been working hard with the department heads to really get their input also, so it's not, it hasn't been a siloed one-person work. So. Paul, do you have any?
No, I do not. I'm in, I'm in agreement with everything that you've mentioned so far, as far as that's concerned, yeah.
So Austin, are you hoping to have us, I mean, I was kind of originally hoping that we could kind of approve them tonight, but if the board would rather take another two weeks, just we had them, I think, for a couple we, I can't remember when we got them originally, if it was two meetings, yeah. So we've had them for almost a month, but I also realized that we had the bylaws and stuff, so like I said, I'm happy to entertain a motion to approve as presented, or also if we want to wait another two weeks and then I think FinCom has already seen them. They've been before FinCom and for the opportunity to provide any sort of feedback or anything also, I think that was one of the big considerations we had originally. That the work wasn't just us and not involving FinCom at all, so.
I, I personally wouldn't mind having one more round, only, I mean, just for myself, I'd like to go through it a little bit more, but I think it would also be good to have Harry here as well.
Yep.
Before board to.
Is that okay with?
Sure, yeah.
So.
You could do a first reading or you could
Yeah.
Do that next time, whatever.
Yeah. Maybe this can be our first reading or just kind of you had gone through them a little bit more in depth. I think last time they were just kind of, they're included here for you to start. And then this is our kind of first reading. If, I will say, if you have anything questions or concerns, please feel free to reach out to Tamika Austin beforehand so that we can come together with a set of of considerations or, or whatever for, look at the meeting. And then the hope would be that we would approve them at the next meeting and probably see another maybe. I don't know if we're quite ready for personnel.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
You can get those on for like first reading, you know.
I don't wanna be too policy-heavy on you guys. You guys have done a lot of legal language.
I'm getting antsy though, like. So. Okay. Thank you, Austin.
Thank you.
And thanks to everybody involved in that. Did you have other?
No, other than that, I'll just be attending the finance committee on Thursday to further discuss budget and, and some other items and looking forward to hearing some feedback from this board and FinCom.
Yep. I wanted to thank you for the department head kind of roundtable the other night also. I thought that that was, although it was different, I thought it was helpful to kind of see everybody once and hear, hear their, their wants and needs and kind of where the, the department is and then go from there. So.
Department head, so yeah, I can only sit here and nod my head here.
Okay, so we'll hold those and then do hopefully the second reading and adoption at our next meeting. Moving into old business, I don't think we have any for old business. We started out with a heavy agenda and then things kind of got switched around, so. New and special business, we have the nominations for the twenty twenty-three annual town report. So we, I think at our last meeting had asked the public to submit nominations for the dedication page and then for the in memorandum page, in memoriam page. And we had a few individuals for both the dedication and the in memoriam page. So I think the hope is that tonight we would select our our dedication and in memoriam. So for dedication, we had Gary Kelleher, Anita Carlson, Ken Lau and Becky Tuttle. And for in memoriam, we had Ken Lau and Ron Marsh. So I guess we can start with the dedication page.
Do we just make motions, how does this work? I can't remember. Did we do the question?
Yeah, yeah, so it's whatever the board is comfortable with and once you decide who you would like, if you could make a motion for whomever you're choosing.
Who said it last year? I should remember that, but I don't.
Um, the, the in memoriam was Mr. Meager.
Oh.
No, because Mr. Marsh hadn't passed away during that fiscal year, so it ended up being Mr. Meager and the dedication was the three-hundredth anniversary committee.
Oh, okay, yeah, I remember that, okay. All right. I mean, I'll, I'll, I'll make a, for dedication page, I, I'll, I'll make a motion to select Rebecca Tuttle for the dedication page. Do we do it one at a time or?
Yeah, it doesn't really matter to me. We can do, we can do it one at a time. So dedication, we have a motion for Becky. Is there a second?
May I ask you a question?
Yeah.
I, I get, no, what's, I guess, what's my question? Of all the people that have been nominated, I, I only know some of them. So I guess personally for me, I don't I don't, I don't know all of them well enough to say one way or the other. I can only speak to my experience with the few that I do know.
Yep. Is it? No, and that's kind of how it goes. I mean, we have the, the forms that the nominees submitted, kind of giving a synopsis. And we generally, it's not, it's at the the decision of the board. And there's been many times, I think, that the board has voted on people that the entire board didn't, didn't know or wasn't aware of. So.
Just a side note, I think you're thinking of Mr. Marsh got the Moses Howe Award
Okay, yeah.
Last year, just so you don't think you're going crazy, so, yeah.
No, 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 I knew something was, yeah, I'm like, I knew something.
Yeah, sorry, it gets confusing.
Yep.
No, I mean, I just, real quick, I picked Becky because, I mean, obviously she's leaving. She's been a great employee for ten years, ten, twelve years, twelve years?
No, ten or.
This year will be eleven years.
You know, I mean, she's done an incredible job by herself in that, that office for a long time. I mean, with a little bit of help here and there. And I'd like to send her off with the dedication I think she deserves. That's why I selected her.
So we had a motion, was there a second? I would second for discussion and consideration. I think I kind of, I think any of these would be great options, and this is always the hard part, is picking, picking one. But I think kind of Becky has been such a solid force in town for so many years and throughout the, the various cycles of town administrator, various iterations of select board, other department head staffing situations. She's been the one that's kind of stayed and, and kept things going, brought in. Brought in a lot of tax revenue, getting um tax title back on the books and.
She could have very easily gotten disgruntled and said down with it all and
Yeah. Yeah.
Would have been in a lot of trouble.
No.
Hmm.
Um. So we have a motion and a second for Becky. Um is there additional con- conversation around the motion and this and the second? Hearing none, is the board comfortable on voting? Okay, for dedication for Becky. Paul.
Aye.
Ledger aye.
Galvin aye.
Whitman aye. And like I said, all of these four individuals were were great and it's tough to kind of pick pick one. Um looking at the in memoriam page, we have Ken Lau and Ron Marsh.
This is where I can say I don't know either one of these gentlemen. Um this is hard for me. I've heard amazing things about both of them.
Mm-hmm.
I'm sure Paul is an expert with both of these guys, but I, you know.
Through twelve years of school, Marsh sat in front of Matson. Okay? So I mean, you know, yeah, I I I've known Ron, I've known known him very well. Um we got into a lot of different things together, so yeah. You know, like I say, and every time they called a roll call in a in a in a room with Mash and then Matson. Here's what it is.
I mean, I think I think both of these individuals carried so much weight in town. Um I think in the past, we have either had a dedication and or an in memoriam page that has had w- to to individuals or two entities. I think it, like I said, both of these individuals are such a force. Um and Ken Kenny was a a a longtime, very involved individual in town. Um I think he was on, I'm not sure if he was a select board member, I
Yes.
I think I read that in one of the descriptions, yeah.
He was, yeah.
Yeah, um very involved and active um with the fire department um as well. Um and Ron was just the epitome of a a s- of a service volunteer. So I think I would be comfortable having an in memoriam page dedicated to both individuals
Hmm.
um in this instance.
Hmm.
But I don't know how the board feels.
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
I I would agree.
Make a motion to select Kenneth Lau and Ronald Marsh for this year's memorial page. Memoriam page, excuse me.
Is there a second?
Second emotion.
We have a motion and a second. Any other conversation? Hearing none, roll call. Paul.
Matson aye.
Ledger aye.
Galvin aye.
Whitman aye. So thank you. And thank you, everyone who submitted um recommendations. It's always tough to choose and we appreciate that. We do still have the Moses Howe Award open for um public service for the calendar year of twenty twenty-three. Um so please submit those um requests. I think that form is still open on our on the home page and select board page.
Yeah, and we've gotten quite a few nominations so far.
Awesome.
You guys will have a good group of folks to pick from.
Awesome. So thank you again, everyone, and congratulations Becky and um to the Lau and Marsh families as well. Thank you. Um we have the Ware River Watershed Advisory Committee. Um this is a advisory committee that is set up I think through um DCR and um it encompasses on all of the Ware River Watershed communities. I forget how many communities there are. There's a number of communities, um but they ask for kind of representation from um the select boards of those communities and also other individual um entities, recreation, um sportsmanship clubs, that kind of stuff. So this would be to, um Dick Williams has been the um a representative for a number of years. Um he has submitted his resignation, so we would need to accept his re- resignation. And then um Darren Ross has put in to fill Dick's spot on the advisory committee. So we would have to accept Dick's resignation and then consider appointing Darren, if that's the choice.
I'll make a motion to accept the resignation of of Richard Williams from pardon me, Ware Ware River Watershed Advisory Committee. That's a multiple.
That was good though, Paul.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second. Um we don't really have any option other than to just kind of formally accept. So roll call, Paul.
Matson aye.
Ledger aye.
Galvin aye.
Whitman aye with regrets. I know Dick has been a longtime force on that on that committee, so. Um and I appreciate the time and effort he's put in. Um then we have an application to fill that spot from um Darren Ross. Um he had submitted the application um through the website. Um and because this is not a board that's set by the town, it's not really pertinent to get the chair's recommendation or anything because we want someone that has kind of the outdoorsy space considerations of of town versus the committee.
Does this um also follow um the bylaws with the finance committee not being on any other boards because it's not a town?
Yeah.
Okay, just wanted to.
No, it's a good, it's a good
Good question, yeah.
It's a good question and yeah.
Okay.
Yep. So um yeah, again, it's not a town seeded board or commission, so.
Yeah, no, that's fine. Yeah, I just wanted to.
No, but it's a good question. So we have it before us. I would entertain a motion to appoint Darren Ross to the Ware Ri- River Advisory Committee.
I will make a motion to appoint Darren Ross to the Ware River Watershed Advisory Committee.
Tag it.
Motion and a second, questions, comments, concerns? Hearing none, roll call. Paul.
Matson aye.
Ledger aye.
Galvin aye.
Whitman aye. Thank you, Darren, for stepping up and and working on that.
Yep.
Um I don't know if anyone's followed, DCR had been um updating the the access policy and I think that that went through a few um maybe in the fall. Um and so I think that's posted, their their use use form is posted, um or use policy is posted on the DCR Ware River Advisory Committee website, but that was a big push to kind of maintain that the communities that Ware River Watershed is in still have access to the land. Um so that's kind of the ongoing. So our future meetings, we're kind of finishing up, guys. Our future meetings are um there's a FinCom meeting this Thursday. I don't think we're jointly posted. Um we don't need to be, I don't think. We can attend as for informational purposes, but it's really a FinCom to have a conversation about um the budget and everything based off the department heads and everything. Um our next reg- regular scheduled meeting is March fourth. Um and then we have March fourteenth is a joint meeting um with us and FinCom and it'll be the school districts, uh Wachusett and Bay Path both will be here to present their school budgets. Um we'll probably co-post for that. Again, generally that's a historically, it's been kind of a FinCom show, but the select board is definitely there and able to have the com- to have conversation and engage, so.
And I will add, Leah, that um Dr. Riley did specifically ask to meet with both the finance committee and the select board. Um so the intention was to post it jointly, um and I've reserved the big Blair Room so that everybody will have a seat at the table.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah.
Well, and I think the the school administration is trying to really work um more collaboratively with the with all the towns, um FinCom as well as the select boards and administrators, managers, whatever.
Is is that meeting something that we expect our school committee reps to go to or no?
Um I think last year, the school committee reps were at
They did attend, yep.
Um it's interesting because their bylaws dictate the way that they can interact with um the community and they have to be very careful. They can kind of attend, but can't really speak on behalf of the the committee as a whole. They can really almost just listen. Um my guess is they will be there. We can maybe put out and ask and see if the four of them are able to attend, just at least to be present. Um but.
Sure, and we can do the same for Bay Path as well, 'cause I do know that their representatives attended last year too.
Yeah, yeah. And I'm not sure what the bylaws are for Bay Path to allow their school committee members um to engage more with the the community, kind of. Sure, thank you. And then we have an uh ne- after that, we have a March eighteenth meeting also.
We have the St. Patrick's Day.
It'll be a good one. Um so is there any other business to come before the board before we adjourn to executive session? Hearing none, I would take, and I think Austin sent a note around saying that we would hold one of the, we would hold reason number three um until probably our next meeting. So I think that we can adjourn directly from open or from executive session. So I would take a motion to adjourn to executive session for reason number six, to consider the purchase, exchange, lease or value of real property if the chair declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the public body. Letter A, discussion of lease for historical society building Franklin T. Woodhouse, two thirty-two Main Street, not to return to open session and adjourn from executive session.
So moved.
Is there a second?
A second.
Motion and a second. Anyone have any questions or comments? Roll call.
Matson aye.
Ledger aye.
Galvin aye.
Whitman aye.